On call this meeting of the West Branch Planning and Zoning Commission Order, I welcome all the people in the audience. Staff members, mission members. We have Russell.
Chairperson Fuller.
Here.
Commission member Powers.
Here.
Ben Stoy.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Hoffman. Here.
That's it.
We have an A agenda in front of us and so I would appreciate approval of that agenda or any additions.
Let's move.
Let's go second. All of us in favor of a voice move aye.
Aye.
The very first thing to do is to look at the minutes of the last couple of meetings. The November twenty third meeting, whatever it's been before us. Hope you've had a chance to take a look at them. And are there any changes, revisions, corrections to those minutes? Don't appear to be any, so all of us in favor of accepting the minutes. Aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Seven minutes from that meeting, then we have a special meeting on December thirteenth. And again, any changes, revisions, corrections to those meetings and minutes. And we have a second. A second, all of us in favor, aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Okay, now we can go on the rest of the video. The very first item is four on your agenda, that is to have a public, whoops. Sorry, very first item is four A, which is figure out how somebody who's going to be chair for the mission for the next year. Are there any nominations?
Nominate John Fuller.
Second.
Third.
Any addition, nominations? Okay, if none of those. Never having you do this for another year.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay, I feel like we should ask that first.
Okay, there's a favor of the nomination, aye.
Aye.
Disposed. And then we need to have ourselves a vice chairperson for the coming year.
Nominate Ryan Bauer.
A second.
Any additional nominations? There are none, all of us in favor, aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Okay. Then we have something which is a little bit different, we've not done this before to my knowledge anyway. And that is to have someone serve as secretary for the mission of this coming year. Are there any nominations for a secretary?
Lee.
What?
Yep, I could do that.
Okay.
Nominate Emily.
Very good, we have a second. There's some favor, aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Wonderful. Thank you, I think that.
Thank you, sir.
Large shoes. Or boots, as is today. The next is item D, which is a public hearing. This is on the rezoning for Meadows Part Five. R one, R two, we've heard about this as commission members in the past. But this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to hear from anyone who would like to. Walk on this rezoning, anyone who is in favor of it, anyone who opposes it. Any comments that the public might have. Yes, great.
Chris, vote for Meadows Development. Yeah, we're asking to rezone about eight acres from R one to R two. And maybe if you have a map handy, so it's in between two R two areas already. So there's R two to the east, which is Lathan Ridge, and then R two to the west, which is part of our ground up there. So it's in between those two sections. We're not coming with a plat yet at this time. We're still kind of working out those plans, but we know we want to rezone it. That's what we're looking at.
Yes, please come forward and let me know who you are and everybody here from you.
It's Barbara Fortune. I want to know what the difference between R one and R two.
R one allows only for single family residences.
Okay.
R two allows for multi-family residences.
So is that just.
Only two blocks.
Like zero lots.
Yeah, not multi-level, like twelve blocks, we're talking side by side duplex.
Like a town hall.
Zero lot is what they call it.
Zero lots?
Yes, so no more than two.
No more than two?
Okay.
Yep. Okay, that was my question.
That's a great question.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else here to share their thoughts? There are no other comments, according to public hearing votes. Next, we have a motion that I assume Chris will speak to you. The rezoning Meadows Part Five from. No, I'm sorry, this, this is, we had public comments, we had discussion. The next question is whether the mission wishes to approve and pass the change of the city council. My motion on this topic.
Motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second. James seconds. All of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed. We'll move on to item F, this is very different, you've not heard about this particular proposal before. And that is to have a preliminary plan. On the area that's northeast corner of West Main Street and Cedar Johnson Road. This is a potential development that we've talked about, but we've not seen anything in the way of a concept plan. Who would like to share with us what you have in mind?
I introduce what's going on, just to kind of remind planning and zoning, the original idea of this Part Four addition was to have a cul-de-sac in this area, it's got it connected to, I guess, Hoover River Highway or the main entrance in the, in the town, so that's one small difference to look at. There are a couple of things which all, which Gary will introduce, but his plans are, Gary's got some prospective clients that are working faster than normal, so I thought it'd be a good idea to just do a, just a draft look before you, we get into any type of discussions. And Gary will have to work with some architects on a couple of things. So just for your information, Gary, if, I'm going to pass out these, there's, if you want to show when you get up here where you're thinking the thirty plexes are on this, if we do a thirty plex, we would have to rezone the planned unit development, we haven't talked about that yet, Gary, that's just me getting used to, being new here and knowing zoning ordinance. But as of this point, he just wants your initial thoughts or comments, anything, he'll kind of explain what his, his plan is.
Okay, I'll leave my mask off so you can hear what I'm saying.
In front of you, I think you've got, you've got two sheets of of a drawing of two different buildings, two totally different buildings. Also, I think you've got our plat, our proposed plat. So looking at the, at the site plan, I want to talk. Lots, one and two, these are looking at being commercial properties, doctors' offices, dance studio, or, you know, hopefully a pharmacy, maybe a. Well, I'll just leave it at that, I don't want to let too many cats out of the bags, but you know, your smaller commercial buildings, they could have commercial on top, they could have commercial on bottom, the way that those lots layout, we're probably going to see parking lots on top and on bottom. Both, both floors being used by totally different entities, maybe commercial on the bottom facing Main Street. And maybe somebody would want to put, you know, six or eight apartments on top, just don't know, but that's what we're looking for on those lots. Lot number three. This could, we've got a client that would like to bring a.
Yeah.
On lot three, we're looking at a, a client, possibly two clients bidding for a convenience store, they're mom and pop, not a Casey's, not a come and go, but more of a mom, pops convenience store, both of them have multiple in the state, so we know that they're solid, they'd be a solid anchor client, they'll be here today, they'll be here ten years, twenty years from now. Their products, when the time comes, will be able to show, but it's very updated, it's not the old tin shed hip roof type, but they're a very nice, very nice facility. Moving back on lot four, which is the bigger lot of the, of the five. We are kind of assuming maybe an individual, or not, like an independent or area for people to move into before they go to the assisted living and then to the nursing home. It's kind of interesting, we have, I have talked with three different individuals on that. Very excited about it, one would like to know if you can start tomorrow, and I said, no, I don't, I don't think so, that's kind of jumping the gun. So we don't want to get too fast, you know, we want to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row because once we pull the plug, if we're able to pull the plug, we're going to, the day we start, we'll be there until we're finished, we're not. We don't come in and work five years and hope that it's done, we're looking at, I'm going to be pretty optimistic, you know, a two-year, three at the most turnaround. On lot five, I don't think you have anything drawn in there, but lot five, we are looking at, like the pictures that. One is a thirty-six plex and the other one's a thirty-three plex, but offhand, I don't remember which is which, I think I think the bigger one is the thirty-six and the darker one, smaller ones, the thirty-two plex. Reason we're looking at doing this, of course, is, is cost is cheaper to go up. But I've been kind of a conservationist for sixty years, am I sixty-five, and you know, the twelve plexes have been beat to death, the six plexes have been really beat to death. But I just don't like going to an apartment arrangement or a multifamily and all I see is cars and parked cars and junk cars, so what we're looking at is trying to get the buildings, the buildings big enough and attractive enough to house the people, make it a neighborhood in itself, but yet be able to reduce the over, the overslot of cars, some of them we'd be looking at is probably putting underground parking to eliminate a lot of the car and keep it, you know, more of a green space, backed up to the park, we thought would be the, the best for the two residential type settings. So that's kind of where we're at, or what we're, we're hoping that you folks will agree to and, and ask questions and hopefully we can give you the answers in rather quick time.
Okay. Questions?
All I can say is, oh, exciting.
Were you, these units, residential units, were, were they rentals, are they condoed out, or how, what, what do those look like in your idea?
Well, I think that comes down to what the city's looking for, I think I looked at their, I think you folks, somewhere I was, by accident, I stumbled across the survey or something commissioned back in fifteen, maybe what in the city, what direction they want to go and what they wanted.
Comprehensive plan?
Yeah, and I think number three was apartments either for lease or for sale. So, commercial was one of them too, so we're trying to, I guess we're not opposed to having them solely as one versus the other, or mixing them, you know, we can mix them too, so we have nothing, the main thing is, you know, I'm actually, I was born sixty-five years ago, just down on the other side of West Branch here at the Cookson Farm, or the Cooks Farm, so I kind of have a little background here, but, you know, I, I just think I've always wanted to come back here and build. But of course, you know, population drives things and Chris is doing very well the last few years coming on and so I've been in Iowa City, we have been, my partners and I have been, Iowa City, Corvail, Tiffin, I have been a West Branch many years ago, across from the Ford Dealer. Cedar Rapids. Waterloo, Des Moines, so we've been around, so we've seen them. But the main thing is, we want to make a neighborhood here, it's sort of isolated, and we want to make a neighborhood and make it, you know.
The only reason I ask is, one of the things that are comprehensive plan is affordable housing, and so looking at what that means, like, in terms of affordable housing.
Yeah, we would look at that in here, you know, we've had, we've done that in all the other cities, you know, so it's nothing.
Great, I just wondered what kind of what your thoughts are.
If the numbers are there, we'll do it, you know, we just can't, we can't have forty units and only two want to, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Work with whatever the.
Okay.
Then I do call your attention to the housing chapter, that comprehensive plan, because what it found was that the dirt of our home and housing in West Branch is one of the key problems. It has some backing, some data.
No, I think, I think it'll be a nice project. City will be happy.
Now, I think you mentioned something about a park between the two buildings.
Pardon me?
Did you mention, I'm sorry, did you mention something about there being some parkland between the two buildings?
Some park, no, we talked about parking under the buildings.
I, I heard that.
Parking. And I might have said backing up to the park, that's why I want to eliminate all the cars in the parking lots type thing. Because you're going to put money and emphasis in that park space behind, I don't want it polluted with a bunch of cars looking like a whole parking lot. So we'll try to hide them, if it's separate garages or underneath, you know, it's whatever, whatever the, the terrain dictates, of course.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I think when we saw this plan originally kind of conceptualized, there was some, this discussion about potential for like a future trail, maybe by the city along the back of its property. And I think I guess, we're obviously at a really preliminary stage, but when you come back with your final plans, we, you know, we, I think we're all in favor of this type of development, we want to see these kinds of things come to West Branch. We'd also like to make sure those things are discussed and so we know how that's all going.
Trail, the trail won't be on this property, it's on Outlaw Day.
Okay.
So that's, we've already discussed that, that has been moved on, totally on to Outlaw Day.
Then is there, I know you mentioned the possible commercial along Hoover Highway, Main Street.
Main Street.
Would that be like on-street parking, or are you looking at like outside?
No, that'd be all, awful, all off-street parking.
Like, not like angled stalls, it's, I'm just wondering if it's a
like a parking lot?
Yeah, like if the parking lot's right on the street, or if that's out, like in a separate lot inside the.
No, it'll be, it'd be like any of your smaller doctor's office where they have individual parking lots versus on the street, I don't think the city, I don't think that's going to have on-street parking.
Wouldn't seem like a good fit.
Yeah.
A lot of traffic goes by in that.
Yeah, we'll definitely do nice parking lots made out of asphalt. I had a little tidbit on you earlier, so.
I got you.
No, I'm kidding.
You got to have a little bit of it.
Yeah.
So as you mentioned, the earlier site plan, site plan, concept plan, it seemed was to have a cul-de-sac in the area. And as I recall, it was to have access from Cedar Johnson Road.
We're, we're, we're requesting this on your plat there to bring, bring it all the way through to eliminate the cul-de-sac. We'll just have from Johnson Cedar down onto Main.
Dave's not on the call, but Dave, our engineer, looked into that, there'd have to be some additional training to make sure that it's safe. There's been backend discussions on possible turn lane there as well. So, but that is, that is how they will present it, that is a part of, I guess, the anchor or the pole for that convenience store, is that right, Gary?
Right.
Require traffic study in some sort there, right, for considering the high school.
Yeah, I think the engineer would probably tell us what he needs there.
Yeah, we, your traffic, your traffic survey of two thousand twenty, we've looked at that, worked with Dave, and that's what we base this off of. Also, the fact of putting a hundred or hundred and fifty additional units up there and housing with one, one entrance is not going to be good.
Yeah.
For anybody.
Right.
The other thing is the fact that we've got a cul-de-sac going, or a roundabout going in, and I have, we have, you folks have no idea how it's going to go. So how, if we do come in here, how do we access the road if the, if the roundabouts got everything closed off?
That's where I need to.
We don't want to go through the residential, so that's, those are the two reasons why we're asking for it to through the road.
Moving parts going on here.
Oh, yeah. A lot, and it looks like it will be for a little bit.
Have you had any conversations with the high school, junior high school, about having a convenient store across from the high school?
I haven't talked with them, I've heard there's been, there was some concern ten years ago when the high school built. Twelve years ago, whatever that was, but.
Considerably more.
Probably more, but like in our earlier meetings, things change over time. Everybody, nobody wants anything in their backyard, and I'm sure you folks live in a home that started in somebody's backyard one time, so you know how things progress. We're doing it, we're doing it for the city. City mainly, and then in this case, the high school would be secondary. But we're going to work with both, I think you'd be surprised that if we do do the convenience store next year, when the teachers and the kids come, it'd be interesting to do a survey, how many stop at that convenience store before they go across the street. So as Adam mentioned, we're looking at, you know, third lane, turning lane to accommodate any future problems before we even start.
I do appreciate having smaller, smaller mom and pop kind of stuff than feeding into the funnel, and that is the bigger story on the topic.
Yeah, they're very good, the people that are going to run this, they're, they're very good with with their products, with working with the city, you know, so.
They'll have gas pumps.
That's it, we'll have pumps.
Is the pump?
Selfish questions?
Yeah.
Asking for a friend.
Yeah, they do have a diesel pump on theirs. Two that I am thinking about, yeah, they have to do something. Of course, I don't think you're going to fill tractor trailer out of the small one, but. If the needs there, possibly, while they know it in advance. Whereas the city buy their diesel fuel. For their vehicles, maybe we can put a diesel pump in there for the city.
There you go.
Share it, yeah.
To answer part of the school question, I did let Marty Jimmerson know about three, four weeks ago when I first got here. Just by the way, meeting with Gary, I could tell things were too fast, so I did give him the heads up on that, he didn't have an issue, he was actually in favor of it. I did tell him to give his school board a heads up three weeks ago, I haven't heard anything from them, but that's not to say once there becomes a decision, there won't be someone come here and say something, right now I have not heard any negative comments.
I look at it as, kids, if the kids want to go get their sandwich and their drink, I'd rather have them walk across the street and pile four of them and run across the interstate and broadside it. You know, for seven years, I drove a tow truck over the years, and that's not pretty, so, so I've seen it happen. So that's why when I saw this, I, I thought this would be a great addition to the, to the neighborhood and to this, to the city, so.
I think as a commission member, what I'm going to prioritize is safety, because you know, you're going to have kids run across that Main Street a lot more often, that's going to be a very busy street right now.
We're talking about a traffic, a walk, lighted crosswalk there.
Probably also talking about the twenty-five mile promise, so what we have, Brandon, you got a question?
Yeah, just also going towards that point, I guess, it seems like this is pretty similar to what happened when the Meadows Development went in right across from the school entrance now, where we had as long as we can divide sidewalk access down to that point, either the school or the city may have some connection that needs to be made, and there will have to be some design made or consideration.
My understanding is the traffic speed limit will go from thirty-five to twenty-five, so that's your biggest, that's the biggest factor out there, anything over thirties. To get it down to twenty-five.
I think it also gives support for the traffic circle.
How soon are you going back with it, when are we going to see it again, is it next month or next week?
How like you say, help, Brian?
Make sure we have. We're going to move as fast as we can, let's just put it that way, as fast as.
I like the overall concept a lot, yeah, I think there's, yeah.
Things that are going on, I would expect this tour to meet every month. And to be with developers, pretty hard before construction season, so my guess is, people want to be here next month. That may need to be something that's.
I think we end up meeting almost every month.
We have been, yeah, I think the members here have been feeling pretty good.
I think we just all assume. So I don't think you're going to see any pushback on that at all.
Okay, other, other questions? I'm thinking that in addition to diesel and gasoline, you probably need enough charging stations here.
I was just.
Get you a few seconds. Okay. Next, we have something that has not come up here for quite a long time, and that is looking at an extraterritorial development idea for who's served that subdivision. So, why someone would like to share information about that.
While we introduce the topic.
Mark Stein with MMS Consultants, representing the stars to address any questions you have on this subdivision outside of West Branch, very similar to Albah Acres just to the east, it's just a one-lot, single-family lot.
Hey Mark, you want to repeat, our volume wasn't very loud in here?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you guys too, I'm on the, I'm on the phone call situation here, but I'm, I'm Mark with MMS Consultants in Iowa City and representing this, Ed and Anita Starr, who are doing this subdivision just outside of West Branch. And I, I said it's very similar to the, very similar to Albah Acres, which is right to the east, it's a one-lot, single-family subdivision.
Brandon, you have a question?
It seems like it's just being subdivided, so the, so the house property is separated from the agricultural property, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, the house, the, the farmland's being separated from the. Yeah, that's right. The house, the, the farmland's being separated from the, from the house site, basically.
Can you speak at all to the intent? I mean, we're assuming the intent is to keep it agricultural and, and the house?
Yeah, I believe, I don't know if he plans on selling the farmland to the farmer. That might, I'm not sure if that's it or but just to separate it so it's possible to sell or have that option. I, I, I don't believe, there's no plan to, you know, develop that property to the north, just keep farming it.
Has Johnson County had any comments on the farmland split?
Cedar County?
I can answer that one, Mark. Adam, the city administrator, Mark, when I reached out to the county, their planning and zoning, their administrator said this does qualify as a minor subdivision. The city does have the right to review this. And this is speaking on behalf of our engineer. He did caution that Four Street could potentially be a major thoroughfare. So his opinion is to think twice about waiving the review. But you guys have the right to review it, the final plat, or you have the right to waive it and recommend that to council. I, I just don't know exactly what all is planned there for me to say recommendation one way or another to you guys. I'd like to have more information, and I think it'd be nice for you guys to know, because once you split, once you allow the split to have happened, you have no control. So once you guys let it go, you'll have no control. And it's not always about control, but it's, it's about is Four Street, is there gonna be future growth north of town? This, you could end up with an issue of a, you could have had a major, or not really major, you could have had a road go from Four Street down. Once you give that up, then there's nothing the city can do at that point. So I'm not unopposed. I'm not in favor. I'm just in caution until I know exactly what's going on. And I would just say all, almost always available. You know, if I'm not in a meeting, I'm very accessible. So more than willing to talk with Mark and the stars just to get a little bit more information. But that's, that's just my thoughts to you guys. I don't, I don't have a yes or a no for you, other than I'd like to have more information.
From what I've heard, there's no immediate need to make this decision. Am I correct in that?
Say it again?
Yes, there an immediate need to make this decision or?
Well, they're, they're just trying to work it through the Cedar County and one of the first steps is get approval from West Branch or have them waive their right to review or whatever, whatever the process is in West Branch, basically. I, I don't think there's any deadline they're trying to meet or anything. That I know of.
So if I understand correctly, our options are to waive the right to review or just to review the final development as proposed. I don't think there's any harm in reviewing it when it comes. I don't think that if it's intended to be used as agricultural property and the residential stays residential, there's any reason for us to be against it, but it would also be nice to know that that's what's happening and we need it.
It's our responsibility.
It's very similar to that Albah Acres one to the east there. I think that's just a one-lot subdivision with a, a single-family house on it, basically.
In support of Ryan's comments, I think that if we table this, we still have additional information. Wouldn't really do too much harm to the developer. And we could just wait until that additional information. Okay, well, I'll make that proposal. It's been seconded. All those in favor? I?
I.
I.
You opposed? Okay.
Question for you, John. What, what would help you guys make a decision? What would you guys like to see? Just to give Mark a little bit of guidance.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what, what we're looking for.
Is this the final lot of the way?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a one-lot subdivision. We're just doing a one-lot subdivision, going out around the windbreak on the west side and around the house. There's a, there's a windbreak on the north and west side. I don't know if you have an aerial photo or not there that you can.
That was in our packet. I think I guess the only instance of anything similar to this that I can recall is from about a year ago, we had a subdivision outside of town where they wanted to put in several single-family residential lots along the edge of a agricultural property. And as far as I can remember, on that instance, we did the same thing, which is we did not want to waive our right to review the subdivision. We wanted to know the final details. So I don't know. I guess I understood that these are not the final plans of the subdivision. If, if there's any other updates to be made, we would want to see them. If there's nothing else that's gonna change, then I don't see any reason that this can't be done. But you know, if there's gonna be as, you know, we want to waive our right to review it and then find out there's a a bunch of houses that, you know, whoever buys this is gonna put a bunch of houses out there and the street's not gonna light up like that. That just wouldn't make sense. So.
One, one additional detail that would be useful to me would be to hear more from our city engineer about the prospects for the development of that road.
Probably, Mark, what I would do is I will schedule like a pre-development meeting with the engineer, myself, and Brian Leslie and who's our city clerk, and then Matt Goodell, who's our public works director. And maybe
Okay.
find a little bit more guidance to help planning and zoning, kind of make a decision. I, this is my first time doing extra territorial review, so I'm kind of getting used to how it's done here in this county as well, Mark. So it probably won't hurt. I'll just reach out and we'll set up a meeting with our engineer. So.
Okay, and if, if you want us to attend or the stars, we can just let us know when that is or whatever.
Will do.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, that takes us to item five, old business. By the way, Ryan, I don't think that we've ever heard back.
I believe we did have a second, there were two meetings about it. One was just general discussion, and then the second one was where they had details on, that was where they discussed the roadway, for example, being chip sealed instead of gravel when the houses went in. And we kind of discussed that that was not up to city standards, but it's outside the city, so we can't do anything about it unless we're gonna annex that area. And that's probably a ways down the road for sewer treatment upgrades that would need to happen there too.
But I don't think there's been any activity on the property.
It's been subdivided.
Has it?
Yeah, on the, on the Cedar County website, those lots are all separated now for sale.
Okay.
But it's not complete. The subdivision isn't.
I didn't see anything going on.
It's not, the lots aren't for sale as far as I can tell yet. They still have wells and things.
Where's this at?
East of town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, got it, got it.
Yep.
Okay, number five. Terry, you've got some information for us that you shared.
Yeah, you may should all have a copy of it. Last meeting, there was questions on illumination. Also, division triangle. Put together letter H and letter I regarding illumination in the HCI zones and also on location, which Morris throws in division triangle. Some of the illumination was taken from other parts of the code, parts of sign ordinance, trying to keep it somewhat consistent. Also, the same with the location, the division triangle. Use some language out of the actual fence orders. And went ahead and, and increased the length by five feet compared to what the fence order says. Fence order says twenty-five feet from the intersection of property lines in its way on corner lots. There with an industrial area like the HCI zone, I went thirty feet from the intersection of curb lines. Vehicles are gonna be going a little bit faster out there. People need more time to react. That's what I came up with. The other, I guess, the other thing is with the illumination, I would be debating on whether you know, I put in here illuminated externally, it must be downcast lighting. Then again, I thought about do we want to allow external illumination? Maybe it should be all indoor illumination. I'm open to thoughts on that also.
I thought to my own too.
Is there a risk aligning with downcast?
A risk?
Yes, or risk or concern with downcast?
The consistency, I think.
It, all the, all the lighting and everything is all UL listed and rated for, you know, wet locations for exterior use. So there's really, it's more of a, I think, more for so many looms at the property lines and so forth. Light pollution.
Yeah.
Okay.
This might much more continue, I think, within.
Sure.
I mean, this.
I thought it was a concern with it being in.
Terry, what's our next step?
Well, we go ahead and put it in an ordinance form and bring it back to you to go ahead and vote on whether we want to send it to council. We'll go to council, I think, for free reading. Make great out.
Correct.
Free readings for.
Well, unless we've got more comments or thoughts about it, I think you should go ahead. And Leslie, put it on the agenda as soon as Terry's got it complete. Next is city staff reports. We've got a very interesting report that was given to us about the number of permits in the last seven years, number of dwellings over that same period.
I'll explain this a little bit. So the building incentive program started in twenty fifteen. The number of permits issued was a total number of permits, and that included everything. And then the number of housing permits are on that third column. So the first year, we only had thirty-six permits, kind of a quiet year. Only five houses. And then you can see it each year, it just kind of climbed as the word got out and more lots opened up. But a total of a hundred and twenty-three homes are eligible for that building incentive program. So that means the city will be reimbursing those homeowners five thousand dollars as long as they apply for it. They do have to come to us. We, I send a letter out to each eligible homeowner when they first take occupancy. And then it's up to them to come in with their receipts to get that reimbursement. We've had probably maybe less than ten houses that have actually completed the five, the five thousand dollars, and there's several more to go. So got a long ways to go for this.
What, what did we sunset? What did we sunset? Didn't we sunset?
It's the whole program sunsetted on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so these are grandfather or?
No, so these houses all, they were on the, they received
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Got it, got it. Okay. Got it. Sorry.
Yeah, anything built after, any permits pulled after June thirtieth.
Are no longer, right. Okay.
And I've heard people talking, so I know I'm gonna get those phone calls saying, hey, I heard about this tax of.
I tried to spread the word.
Your permit was issued on July second.
Sorry for your luck.
Well, what really stands out to me is the same number of dwelling units in twenty twenty and twenty twenty. I mean, we were going along year after year with ten or a dozen or so. And then all of a sudden, it jumped up in twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, very large numbers. Keeps Terry very busy.
Did I ask a question or the?
Yeah, just want to answer real quick. Twenty, and from twenty twenty-one, I think part of that is D.R. Horton, because they didn't just come in and buy, build one house at a time. They came in and bought.
Sixteen or whatever it was.
They bought like twenty-five lots and, you know, they, they pretty much had a house in every single one.
Sure.
So.
We had a. Dwellings information is that, like, that would be per, we're doing a lot of duplexes right now, so that's two for each duplex unit, not one for the construction permit.
And this does not include the multifamily ones, because they were not eligible for the building incentive program. So there's other, there was other ones included in that. So there's two duplexes on Madison Lane. There's three in it on Kirsten Lane. There's it's teeny on Riley Lane, and there's a couple on Peterson and Hilltop. Those were not included in that.
Yeah. And then, so.
But you have those data also.
Yes.
I think that'd be really useful to see.
Oh, I reported, I reported every month, so. Almost.
Yes.
You.
I think it's something I could probably put in a chart and put on the website.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, I'm gonna get like.
Or building, or economic.
Yeah. Certainly with the park side development, there's gonna be a lot of multi-unit development there that's probably gonna, I mean, even if it was in this data table, it's gonna be skewed down because there's four units going in and larger units.
Yeah.
And it may only be one permit per unit. Show that we're growing quite quickly for anyone that wants to consider bringing in your commercial business.
Well, this moves us to item number seven, unless there are additional things Leslie or you'd like to share, or Adam for that matter.
Um, no, we'll cover, we'll, we'll meet lots of time.
Okay, that's, that's a threat.
I feel like it's not your first rodeo, you two.
Well, that's funny. Okay, well, then our next meeting is going to be unless something else happens between now and then, which Adam has been promising that us and Will. Next meeting will be on the twenty-second of March, February meeting. And we'll wait to hold from Leslie to let us know whether we meet before that. So, other can a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Sergeant.
All those in favor? I?
I.
That's it.